Okay, if I could get everybody's attention, we'll fall to order this work session for Board of Trustees. Glad to see so many people out tonight. Thank you for coming. You're gonna get to actually see a real work session as we get through some of these things. We have Jimmy is here, Wallace, Tammy, Candace, Dr. Tate, Ray Castillo will be a little bit late. He's on his way somewhere between the bar and Warington in the rank. So at this time, I'm gonna ask that everybody get a copy of the agenda ahead of time? And does anybody have any additions or subtractions they want to make on the agenda? If not, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I motion to approve the agenda.
And Jimmy makes a motion to approve. I have a second. Tammy seconds. Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Did everybody get a copy of the minutes from September 5th? Does anybody have any additions or corrections to those minutes? No? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from September 5th? This is Zoom meeting. Tammy?
This is Tammy. I make a motion to approve
Thank you.
The minutes for the meeting.
Thank you. I have a second.
This is Jimmy. I second the motion.
Okay, Jimmy seconded that motion. So the minutes stand approved. That brings us to Mr. Campbell. Do you have any legal updates for us to see?
So the only legal update at this point is we are still waiting to see if Senate Bill 90, which had multiple technical corrections for all three of the specialty schools, whether or not Senate Bill 90 will be heard before the session ends. And I want to publicly thank Representative Blackwell and Senator Daniel. They are both working very hard to get Senate Bill 90 heard. There are a lot of things that are happening in Raleigh right now with the General Assembly, and I think everyone is aware of that, but those two gentlemen, in addition to others, are very committed to trying to get that bill heard. So I want to publicly thank them for their efforts. And other than that, like we said at the last minute, meeting, it's business as usual at the school until there are some legal changes.
And just so everybody in our audience is aware, the Senate adjourned the legislature without passing the budget and left a lot of bills on the table, just like our Senate Bill 90. So we are really working hard to try to encourage that bill to be heard. It did pass the House. It was held in the Senate. Okay, committee updates. Wallace, do you have anything for us tonight? I think we've sent some things your way. Wallace, can you hear me?
I think he's having a problem. Is he frozen?
Is he frozen?
Yeah.
Okay, Wallace, I'm gonna come back to you. I don't know if you can hear me or not. I will. Our Policy Committee Chair, Ms. White, is out this evening. She's got a family obligation. And we do have some things going to Policy Committee in the next week or two to have some updates done on that. Wallace, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Do you have any business and finance updates for us?
No substantive update. We have not had a meeting of the Finance Committee since the last board meeting. There was a question around ensuring that we have sufficient funds and an appropriate account to pay for a potential recruiter fee for the principal position. So we just had, I just had some email back and forth with Mark and with Hannah regarding that question. And we have identified an account that would be appropriate, but I still haven't gotten a definitive answer from Hannah. Maybe Sandy, you've seen a response that I haven't yet had a chance to see, but you know, that fee amount, we understand to be $15,000.
Yeah. And Hannah came to our meeting yesterday. We had a Zoom meeting yesterday, and she came to that meeting and discussed that amount of money and that fund. And what we have is unrestricted donations. And, but that fund is very limited in what we would be able to do. We had an interview with a prospective company yesterday, and they gave us some more detail as to the number of schools they're working with and the positions that they have searched for. But their starting fee would be $15,000 for three months. And at this point, we can't get, we did not get a definitive answer yesterday as to what would happen if we did not fill a principal position in those three months, what would happen and how much more money would be involved. So those are some additional questions we have of that team. So I will send you some notes from that, Wallace, so that you can get the financials on that.
Okay, thank you.
Travel, travel was not included in that and would be extra. And then that would be on top of the $15,000. And then we weren't sure about just all the, all the things we would get from that. So we will, we'll discuss that more in another business meeting with you all. Yep.
Wallace, one other thing that I was informed by the General Assembly staff is that the school really does need to have an idea of its budget requests for next year, kind of formulated by January at the latest, that the state starts looking at budget numbers and the General Assembly's process. So your committee may want to try to pull together some numbers and some requests for next year's budget before the holiday break, so that we can start the lobbying process for that.
Okay, we'll get a meeting on, we'll get a committee meeting on the calendar to start that process.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're just now beginning to scratch the surface. Oh, Tammy, did you have a question?
This is Tammy. No. The interpreter was frozen for just a moment, but it's cleared up now.
All right. Okay, Dr. Tate?
This is Dr. Tate. So yesterday, the HR Committee gathered over one of our meetings. And Sandy pretty much already condensed that beautifully and well done. So is there anything specific you would like me to elaborate on? I don't really know if there is a need, but I can expand further. Okay. Our meeting yesterday was with a death gentleman. Whose name is Kevin. And the company is NV. It is a death-run company. And the agency works directly with other death agencies, schools, all across the United States. And they have a network of death professionals, again, across the United States. And some things they typically coordinate is contracts with agencies. So for example, they could come to NCSD to see what our culture is, take a tour, and get a feel of NCSD as they start the process. And they will also analyze positions offered to NCSD as well, and expectations of job performances, job responsibilities. And they take that data back and put that in their database to see where those potential good fits would be. And they will send us weekly reports of their data, their information, to see if there are potential referrals and extending our network and seeing if there is a good candidate for that principal position. Of course, it's not a guarantee that they'll find the perfect person or find a person. So that's one sort of drawback. So it's trying to determine what value we would get if we do decide to pursue this contract to help fill that position. If after a three-month period, a principal still has not been found, then we will reorganize, have another meeting, and see how we can make the school and that position more desirable to potential candidates and see if there are specific things we should add to the application and specific benefits that we can add to help draw people in and to hopefully get the perfect person for that position. So that's typically what that progress, what that process looks like. But Sandy, you know, she pretty much said, as far as, you know, the budget, is it worth it? Should we consider that? So we're still figuring out the specifics to see if that's something we would like to pursue and how to make that decision. And of course, we want to be good stewards of our funding and funds. So just something that we are currently working on. And the HR Committee, we are gonna put that back to the Budget and Finance Committee to see if that budget would be available and again, to see if that would be a wise use of those funds and bring it back to the board for further discussion.
Yeah.
And then one more thing, one recommendation. So that agency that I'm speaking of, they did give us a list of, I believe, 11 or 12 schools for the death that they have already contracted with in their time. So that's the thing we could do is reach out to some of those schools and ask how they felt, if they were satisfied with that contract, if they felt it was successful, or some potential drawbacks they felt they experienced, again, to see if that would be a wise use of funding.
And Jimmy?
And this is Tammy. My husband is on the board for the School for the Death in New York, and they did use that same agency and that same service as well. And so he may be able to share his experience on contracting with that agency. But they were able to find their superintendent as a result of contracting with that agency. They had been looking for quite some time, so we could share his experience if we need.
Well, in addition, this is saying, in addition to what Dr. Tate said, board members should be very aware that we're gonna take the advice of our legal team and the company that came, and we're gonna divide those 11 schools among the board members and let us contact them and talk to them about the service they got, whether they were successful, pleased with the candidates, this and this kind of thing. And then we're gonna come back to budget and finance and have them have a very honest and blunt discussion with finances here at the school and see if this is a wise use of what we need to do. So I'll be getting in touch with each board member probably within the next week so that I'll be ready to get the references that we do. Tammy?
This is Tammy. If I could make one suggestion, it would be to come up with a list of questions that we could use as a standardized list to ask during that interview. Yep, I think that, I guess Candace said that's already been mentioned. Okay, great.
Dr. Tate's ready for it.
Candace said we've already got that.
So you already have those questions ready?
This is Candace. Yeah, so I am going to send you everything. I'll send that to everybody. Will you send it to all the board members? Yes, I'll send that list of questions to all the board members.
Okay, so that's how we're going to approach this right now. Okay. I would like to finally let everybody know, we have a marketing committee, and I'm so excited, too excited. And let me introduce Ms. Trula Baker. She's gonna come up with Jimmy for a minute and tell us about their marketing ideas, and she and Jimmy are co-chairing this committee for us. So Trula, if you'll come up here with Jimmy.
Do you want to talk? No, Trula, you go right ahead. You go first.
I think all we've done, if we have looked together on the history of ideas, we want to we want to make sure that the board is on the same page that we are. And we don't start them with anything that's just talking business. So I'm thinking of looking at is social media, Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, the website, and especially that, talking about the school. Doing a brief history of the school, programs of the school, activities that the students are involved in, staff and faculty guidelines, testimonies for students, community connections by the outreach rings, also some of the places around town that the board also include the board trustees or the partners involved in the school.
This is Tammy. This is Tammy, excuse me. The my video feed has frozen. Still frozen. I guess I'll have to use the captions because the video feed has completely frozen. Yes, interpreters are still frozen. Can somebody move a little bit and see if it's gonna unfreeze? Can you all move around just a little bit? Okay, all right, now we, now we're back in, we're back in business.
As soon as the council votes, we'll have some research that they have. And they plan to pitch a that they just went somewhere last weekend and were and highlight that the HAP will and those are just some ideas that we will support together with subcommittees and have folks that are on the list that Sandy has given us to maybe take on some of these topics that we can look together and subcommittees and help them with some marketing ideas for the school so that we can just get a positive picture of all of the school.
That sounds really, really good. Jimmy?
This is Jimmy. Let me adjust my view here. Yeah, this is Jimmy. So I also want to emphasize that with the market, marketing is really important, important for the school. And I guess we need to think, we need to throw our old ways. We've got to clean up and be thinking fresh, think of some innovative ways. You know, we've done things for one way for a long time. So now we've got marketing that we can do that'll be differently now. And, because we've got, we've got a lot of kids, you know, and it's really important. It's important to know, this is the backbone to the school. And as those elementary students go all the way through their years and graduate, it's just really important as we continue to recruit kids, especially the younger ones, and that's gonna support the school. And it's, we need to take it slow, no need to go fast. I think in a year or less, we'll probably be ready, don't you think, Trula? Because we'll have our marketing materials, have all that ready. And it's gonna take time, but we've got to do it carefully. We don't need to be doing something that is out of left field. We need to do some good PR.
We need positive minds out there.
Let's have, okay. Does anybody have some questions or comments to Trula and Jimmy? Anybody have anything you want to add?
This is Ray. I do have one comment. For example, I teach at a college, and as a college professor, having students who, you know, are working in this field but have never seen death professionals in the field, or maybe aren't sure what their goal is gonna be, or maybe it's a death student who was mainstreamed, and then coming into my classroom, and this is the first time they're seeing a death professional, and they're like, oh, this is something that I can aspire to be. This is a great role model for me that maybe they weren't exposed to when they were in that mainstream setting. So I think that could be a great marketing tool to use as well, to have death students looking and watching and meeting death professionals who are currently in the field. Because again, depending on where they're going to school at, they're not getting that exposure, or maybe their parents are thinking that they need to do something more limited as far as career options. So just giving them the opportunity, it may change their entire view of the world and what they think that they're capable of. So just one marketing idea.
And Jimmy said, Jimmy said, thank you, yes.
And we're gonna have to sell the death as a legitimate decision for the child. We've got to sell schools to parents and be positive about their kids. For education, it would be so to see.
This is Tammy. This is Tammy. My video feed has frozen again. I can see Ray just finally.
Okay, anybody else have a comment or anything they want to share with Trula and Jimmy? Anybody have any questions? Jimmy?
Yeah, this is Jimmy. Yeah, we've got our list of contacts and we'll be contacting staff here because we've got a subcommittee that we want to set up, and we are going to put you all over, okay? I promise, you're gonna have some things that you can do, and we want to see how things go. And we'll oversee things, but remember, it's not gonna be soon, but we're gonna be contacting folks, teachers, staff, et cetera, here at the school. And I promise you, it will be hearing folks as well as death individuals.
What is the board, all the board members, do you like what you've heard so far from marketing?
This is Tammy. Yes, this is Tammy, yes.
We're good to go?
Good to go.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Trula, Jimmy? You all, you have an opportunity that we've not had before. We have not been able to market so let's do this right, let's do it good, let's, and let's get out there and, like you said, sell this school.
And that's why it's a little time. We can't just grow something together and go through we've got to go through that process, the procedure, and we've got to work it so that when we do it, we're
Okay, thank you.
Exactly. Yes, exactly.
Thank you much. Appreciate it. Okay.
You're welcome.
Our next committee, Tammy, parental plan. I think Legal has sent you some ideas and stuff, so you all, you can start meeting and getting those procedures going.
Yes, we will. Thank you.
Oh yeah, this is Tammy.
This is Tammy. Yes, Tammy?
Yes, and thank you, Chris, for sending that. Yeah, I appreciate that document. The committee has not met yet. We are going to follow up next week, and maybe the first meeting will be early October. But we're working on having that committee meeting set up pretty soon.
Okay, good. That's good to hear. And our other committee that's gonna give us an update tonight is Communication Procedure, our ASL Policy Committee, Kimberly and Dr. Tate.
This is Dr. Tate. I'm not sure if I should start at the beginning, but Key and her committee, Communication Policy Committee, Procedure Committee, they have been meeting even before I came on board. And I believe that, you know, you had several people involved in that committee. I was really impressed. There were interpreters. Communication access was a big topic. So it was great to see so many people involved in those meetings and the ideas that they were developing. So as far as the communication policy for NCSD, we wanted, of course, one thing to be staff having ASL skills that are fluent. We, our goal was that all staff would have, you know, at least minimal signing skills so we could all have full access for our students regardless of where they are to language. And in order to implement this goal, we've developed an approach on how we can help staff who may not reach those minimal skill levels yet, and how they can continue to improve their language and what those expectations would look like in Intel. So I do have a draft here and going through the process as far as the legal review of what would be to implement it and Communication Access to American Sign Language on the committee, that review. He said that's great so far. And this is Dr. Tate. So we still have several areas and several small issues that we're working out and trying to figure out the specifics as far as, you know, how we're going to enforce these, this policy and how to make sure that it is fair and equivalent across the board for staff members. And again, I'm not submitting this for approval today. I believe, you know, it'd be better if the board could hold on that and allow more time for modifications that need to be made.
Chris?
Oh, and Sandy?
Do you think you'll have it ready for adoption on next business meeting on October 30th?
That's in two weeks. Um, no, this is Dr. Tate. In two weeks, I don't believe so. I would like to propose that we open with this document. Um, and let all staff have an opportunity to review it. That way, you know, I'm sure there are staff who are going to have a lot of questions about how that's going to apply to their job position. Um, or questions about how it's going to apply to the school. So I'd like to have those answered before we move forward with setting it up as a policy. Um, and making sure we have everything worked out.
You're ready for that.
Okay, does that sound good to you, Key? He said, will do. Thank you.
Thank you, Key. Hey, you want to add anything? Do you want to add anything?
This is Key. Nope. Dr. Tate covered it all.
All right. I want to thank all these committees that are working so hard. It is the desire of the chair and legal. So that our committees do all of the hard work. And we don't have to take so much war time trying to do the work in here. And hopefully it will cut down the number of board meetings we have to have, which will also save us financially. So, and I really want to thank everybody that has been so willing to serve on all of these committees. This is a lot of work. We're starting from the very beginning. So, uh, we do appreciate all of that. Does anybody have anything else they want to add about the committees before I go on? Okay. Uh, other old business. I am so excited to tell you that the lawyer has been paid.
Thank you.
That means that we can keep him another month. Oh. So, uh, and, um, I have a, a note here for student handbook and residential life handbook. Somebody wanted to say.
This is Tammy. I just have a question.
Okay, Tammy, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask, how were we able to pay the lawyer? Just wanted to clarify on that.
From, um, state funds.
Wonderful. That's great to hear.
It is now a part of our school. The board is now a part of our school. So state money pays the lawyer. Hopefully we can get a little more. We need to, um, maybe, um, set a committee of some, either board appointed or an ad hoc committee to look at our, uh, residential life handbook and our student handbook. Uh, I've noticed in residential life handbook, we still have some policies and procedures that are still based under DHHS. And we need to, we need to clarify that. We need to go through maybe your office and see if we can use those kinds of policies, if they can use those kinds of recommendations. And some of it has to do with HR. So kind of need to look at all of those and review those a little bit. Staff training for board policies. We have asked the HR director the same to, uh, meet with all the staff in small groups, individually, ever, ever how she can get the policies explained to all of our staff. Because some of these are brand new for, for you, I know, and new for us. So we really want everybody to understand exactly what these policies are doing for us. Uh, who the director's report, Mark did send a report to us. Did everybody get a copy of that? Tanya posted it in, uh, Google Drive. Um, we have 64 total students. Uh, and we have the 31 dorm students. Uh, we did get a state fire marshal report. Did everybody see that in Google Drive?
Yes.
Okay. So you've all seen that. We also have a proposal from, um, Metzger Communications LLC for professional services contract. Uh, and that would be a strategic communications consulting. Uh, Wallace, I'm going to turn this contract over to business and finance. And let you all take a hard look at it and see what you think and, um, what we, what, what, where we need to prioritize this. If, if this is something that, I don't know if he's recommending this. Says to be an opportunity to collaborate. Uh, so will you take that and bring it up at your next business meeting, please?
Yes, we'll be happy to. And I, I'm curious, just while we're talking about it, if you or anybody else on the board has a better understanding of what the purpose of that contract would be. I mean, I, it, the, the description and the director's report just says that it's a marketing group that handles the School for Science and Math. Um, but what all is entailed in that is not clear to me.
Yeah. And I'm not sure if it's any kind of a marketing firm at all for what they do. So if we could, we'll get some more information about this.
This is Dr. Tate. I could add to that. If you would like me to, I could answer that and expand a little bit.
Please.
Right over it, yes.
Okay, you can roll that one.
I'm sorry. I'm, I'll break. I apologize. So this contract, uh, of course, involves many different activities. So trying to condense it down to the two top most primary things would be, um, one is related to improved marketing. So polishing our image, so to speak, and how we present ourselves to the world and how we're viewed. By doing that, that's going to help us increase our funding, um, our lobbying. And again, that increased funding, that would be the goal. So that those type of things would be involved in that first priority. Improving our reputation and our name, and again, polishing our image. So we would be reviewing public documents, our marketing, and just cleaning up those things and making them a little bit more receptive to people. And maybe it's a valid reason as far as the research, but having more awareness of our money that we are receiving that's coming in. And, you know, making sure, I feel like right now it's a little bit of a luxury. And it would be better to focus on the positions, the vacant positions that we have. And making sure that we have, um, skilled, competent staff who can sign. So focusing a little bit more on us internally, um, and then sort of branching out. But again, polishing our image and focusing on our vacancies. That's just what my opinion is as far as.
That's why I, I think business and finance would be good bigger because they can look at it, analyze it. And business and finance is going to know about from the time this is principal and all of this. Yeah, uh, I'm just going to turn that over to you, Wallace. You've got your hands up. I can see it.
Yeah, it's Wallace. Thank you. Candace, that was super helpful, um, just to get a better idea. And I'm happy to, um, get a better sense of what the contract would entail specifically and what the cost would be and where that should be prioritized and bring that back to the board and we can all discuss it. Um, one just thought while I'm thinking about it is I've been meaning to share Sandy with you some, um, outreach campaigns that some other schools for the deaf found, the foundations of those schools do. Uh, so for example, the South Carolina School for the Deaf's foundation has, I think, some pretty excellent outreach that they do. And I think they've got a pretty effective fundraising um, as a result of that. And so, you know, whether or not this contract might be more appropriate and make more sense for the school, or maybe even the foundation, it's just something maybe we could consider. I realize that's a separate entity, but it's just, I'm just putting that out there.
Okay.
And, um, Wallace, just for your information, as you're working through these, uh, these do not, any service agreement, we've researched it, and any service agreement does not require any additional steps through state procurement. So you do not have to put it out to competitive bidding. Uh, there are no additional legal steps. We have given HANA a standard, uh, addendum. It can be attached to service agreements so that you don't have to incur any legal time or expense. So you don't need to run any of this by our office and wanted you to know that because if, if an outside organization does it, great. If they give the money to NCSD to actually execute the contract, you do not have to go through any competitive bid or any kind of steps with procurement. So it's, it's pretty seamless.
Does anybody else have any questions or anything about that? Okay. Uh, that takes us through the agenda. Uh, we do have a confidential personnel discussion to have in closed session. Does anybody else have anything they want to talk about here in open session before we go to closed session? If not, do I have a motion?
Would you like the motion? I would, yeah. So the motion for closed session, board members, is pursuant to GS 143 dash 318 dot 11A1 to discuss matters that are confidential pursuant to session law 2023 dash 10 and pursuant to subsection A3 to discuss matters that are confidential pursuant to the attorney, client, privilege. And as always, you can say so moved.
Do I have somebody to make the motion?
So moved, it's Wallace.
Thank you, Wallace. Do I have a second?
This is Jimmy.
Second.
Thank you. Jimmy has made a second. All those in favor of going to closed session to discuss confidential personnel matters, raise your hand. Okay, I want to thank the audience for being here today. Appreciate you very much. We're forward to seeing you next.